Fire extinguishers save lives. When there's a fire, grab the nearest extinguisher and use it. Fire extinguishers are easy to use, safe, and effective. Fire extinguishers are your first line of defense when there is a fire. Overall, testing concluded that 98% of average untrained people can use a fire extinguisher safely and effectively to help save lives and protect property. After minimal training, this increased to 100%. A fire protection professional has installed the correct fire extinguishers in the building. Be prepared by knowing where they're located. When there's a fire, always pull the fire evacuation alarm and make sure someone is calling 911 and the building is being evacuated. Then grab the nearest fire extinguisher. Using it is easy if you remember paths. Pull the pin. Aim the nozzle or hose at the base of the fire from eight to 10 feet away. Squeeze the operating lever to discharge the fire extinguisher. And sweep the nozzle or hose from side to side until the fire is out. Move forward or around the fire area as the fire diminishes and watch the area in case of re-ignition. So when there's a fire, grab the nearest fire extinguisher and use it. For more information about the effectiveness of fire extinguishers,
Okay, let's go ahead and start the meeting. Cecilia will join us in just a second. Welcome to our special meeting, August 15. It's a short agenda, and Sean is here. He's gonna help lead us through this, since this is my first time giving this. So are there any systems communications? There are not. I would like to share that we are recording, but we're not quite live, but we're very, very close. And everyone cross their fingers and toes, because hopefully maybe for the actual tax hearing, we could be live, which would be really neat. And if that's the case, let's just make sure we really promote that. Okay, so no systems communication. We're gonna go ahead and go to budget and tax items, number two. So the 23-24 budget and tax rate. A is the work session on the budget. So we pretty much did that Friday night. So I think what I would like to do, if y'all agree, is let's just go around the table at least once and see if anybody had any additions, deletions, comments from what we did Friday. You should have the amended budget here. I don't want the amended budget. I just took one.
Yeah, that's what I was actually looking for.
Okay, so who would like to go first? Don't all jump up at once. Johnson does.
Okay, this is gonna come out kind of stream of consciousness then, but that's okay. So, you know, in looking at this, there were a couple of items. I was just trying to see from our work last time, and now we have this updated version, which is good. I guess, who is not here, but this, so this five, the fact that the, from last time's proposed budget is a black box, that was supposed to have negative 1.2-ish.
901.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'll do that. 901, in it, and now it's blank, now white and doesn't have a number in it. So does that mean that it's zero?
You're talking about a signed surplus?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
It's supposed to be, or it was at one point, 1.188, and I think she said it went down to 5,000, 500,000, it was negative 500,000, right?
Right, well, I remember that, but now there's still no number, even though it's a different color.
It's not in the packet, right?
Yeah, I think it's a negative 533. That's what I wrote down. Is that what you have?
Well, I just. You have it blank too.
Yeah, mine is blank, but I think.
So Lisa, you, she probably haven't got answer cards over there. I thought she said you were gonna control that part.
She sent it to me last time. She didn't say anything about me controlling it. I don't have an answer for me. Yeah, I'm asking her now in email.
Okay. Yeah, she is moving.
Yeah, she is.
So she's not gonna respond tonight.
So do you have actually the budget that she sent us?
This is what's in.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Or you don't have it online?
No, what she, no, what she provided to us, I printed it out for you. It's in front of you now.
But I'm looking at it online, and it's also blank.
So I'm wondering if the live version actually has a blank.
I'm looking at it online. It's showing the same way.
Okay, so that was one of the questions. So I guess some of the things, just thinking through it from last time. So there's about 405,000. Those are the stuff that could definitely move into bonds based on our conversation last time, right?
You wanna go and speak to that part?
Yeah, one of you.
No pools.
No pools?
Yes, so 54, the water code exclusively prohibits any bonded expenditures for pools or golf courses.
Okay.
Oh, even if we did a bond saying pools.
Yeah.
You could do a bond for pools.
Not with tax bonds.
Wow.
So I did reach out to Lisa to just get kind of a more detailed idea of what each of those were and sent to Bond Council, but she did not come back with anything that could be included under pool.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that's a dollar.
Sorry.
No, it's good. It's already.
Okay, so that's X. Now we don't know what's, could be bonded. We made 73,000 in cuts last time-ish, and so I'm just trying to get it to where we could do 0% increase on the average household.
Right.
One thing I was thinking was the sprinklers. I don't argue at all that the sprinklers need to be done. They obviously need to be done. But if we're going to once a day watering, and, I mean, do we want to spend half a million dollars on sprinklers when?
You're saying once a day?
Yeah, we just need to stage three.
And what I meant was once a week.
Yeah, okay.
Sean's thinking we're getting on the way.
I'll be listening.
Right, once a week watering, my apologies. If we're going to once a week watering for the foreseeable future, is that where we wanna put half a million dollars? So.
Good point.
Food for thought. I guess I'd have to go through some of my other comments here, but the bond things, I'm just trying to see again how we can go to 0% increase without cutting into the reserves, the reserve amount. Let's see, on the new.
Hey, but remind me, what's the, what, where do the sprinklers land?
The landscaping, right?
No.
It was, it's a 1791 capital.
It's capital.
From last time.
Okay.
Is that correct, Lisa? That was my other?
Okay, so.
So 570. So I'm not arguing that the sprinklers don't need to be done and that the landscaping in the neighborhood is not important, but I wonder if the situation's gonna be, when they go in, are we not gonna be able to turn them on?
Yeah, maybe this year is not the year to do it.
Well, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there for discussion, so that's, that's one element.
But is that, which, does the old park student on the irrigation, I can't recall, Lisa, what was it?
This is gonna be just for Tomlinson.
Oh, I thought it was for Loop and Tomlinson.
No, not Loop. Half a million dollars just to sprinklers and Tomlinson.
Just a high-level process that we do.
Sure.
So I know this is the first time, we've got three new board members, first time to levy. It's not that complicated, but I just wanna make sure, I'm a very high-level person, so just to make sure we're all on the same page here. So you met last week to just chat about your budget. Just to refresh everyone's memory, you wanna have your budget and your O&amp;M levy aligned, but at the same time, you can always amend your budget through the course of the fiscal year. For tonight, what we need to do, what you're going to, so the actual tax levy process is a two-step process. Tonight, we need to discuss what your levy's gonna look like, and then subsequent to our meeting tonight, we'll need to finalize the meeting date, but you'll publish your proposed tax rate as a form of notice. And what you will specify within that taxure publication is that the time and the location of your meeting, but more importantly, what your proposed tax rate is. When we come back to actually levy, we need to set that date tonight as well. You can levy lower than what you published tonight, but you can't come any higher. I certainly don't recommend that you do. Now, between tonight and what I think is probably gonna be the 13th of September, you have one more budget meeting scheduled. So you can, you can do a true-up between what we do tonight and that meeting. You've kind of got some flexibility to the calendar here, but your building, this is kind of the first of two steps in terms of your actual levy that I think is likely to be completed on the 13th of September, when you'll actually levy. So I've been answering questions, just wanted to make sure.
Can I ask a process question about Sean? Here is something I was looking at, and I haven't a chance of it because since we met on Friday this week, but I was noting on the part, and this may build a question in a bit about the rate we'll have to do if we do bonds, but, something if I'm wrong on this, Sean, but let's say for argument's sake, the rate necessary to issue the bonds would put us over the 3.5 one, because that's the combined fire, debt, M&amp;O. We would then need to still go out for an election to exceed, right? Unless we manage to cut the M&amp;Os sufficiently to keep, right?
Yeah, and so much there, and you probably know a little bit more nuance than other entities, but you're looking mostly at the average home state value and the O&amp;M. So usually, increase is uniquely focused on your O&amp;M side. With that said, you know, from a kind of marketability perspective, I think your financial advisor is always gonna try to keep debt service steady so that you're not ruining your overall tax rate on any given year either.
No, of course, it's more of this talking about where, if, for argument's sake, if the rate necessary to issue the bonds pushed for the, whatever M&amp;O where we've gotten these proposals right up, we have to make these corresponding reductions in the M&amp;O to accommodate that. I don't know what the rate would be, but that's, but to make sure it's clear and clear. Because I know from prior work experience, when cities and counties and other entities do this, the numbers all run off just their M&amp;O, right? That their bond rate is what their bond rate is, and it's tapped on top, not as a component of their money, if that makes sense.
That's right, and if there's a rollback, it's always uniquely on the O&amp;M, not on the debt service.
Yes.
So for your argument's sake, if you all were to reach that 3.5%, because you are a developed district, it's mandatory election.
Yeah, that's also something I was getting towards, yes.
Director Johnson.
Sorry, thank you. The tax notice, the tax rate, that public hearing notice in the packet this week is very different than the one last week.
Are you looking at the one that has parity on top of this year?
I don't know. The word parity?
The word parity.
Neither of them seem to have that word.
You're trying at the notice?
Yeah, the 29.
So making this.
So that's this one, just the one in the board packet today, right? Because the reason I ask is because the rates, oh, I'm sorry, yes, parity at the top of that section. I apologize.
Not a problem.
I was looking at the top of the notice.
I just wanted to make sure I was looking at what you were looking at.
Gotcha. So parity, and then it's a 0.14% increase. Okay, thank you.
I don't, I will say though, that it's not what I would recommend that you all publish, and given that you all have several projects coming up, both in the immediate and foreseeable future, our recommendation is going to be to keep as much O&amp;M as possible to help with your budgeting.
I understand.
The INS is fixed.
INS is fixed, fire is fixed. So the only play that there is in that tax rate is your O&amp;M.
And so it's right now at 0.27, but 0.28, correct? Is that what it's showing on this notice?
Yeah, if you look on the parity notice, it can see.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back, oh, I'm sorry, you've done, sorry.
Oh, yes, I am.
So I wanna just kind of look, I'm looking at, and I don't mean to hit your belt buckle over here, but Sean, you've got $250,000 in legal. Is there anything in there that we can trim out and not, I mean, we can always amend the budget, but I think that that's rather high on legal. And it was 178. Hopefully, we are going to.
For 900.
Not need as much legal as we have in the house. So that could be about $70,000 if we just kind of go back to the, what we actually are, maybe $50,000. I mean, is there any way that we can kind of trim that?
Well, for one thing I will point out here, it looks like we're accommodating under budget here if you annualize to the end of fiscal year. And I'm always willing to, you know, accommodate whatever you guys wanna do. I certainly understand it's a significant part of the budget. There are costs we can't control on our sides, you know, I think from a process perspective, you know, just that, well, it sounds trivial, you know, the trimming down the minutes in size, I think, I don't think that was necessarily accounted for, but that's probably gonna trim 24 hours of my time per year, I would say, so.
That's a good number.
So that, that's, certainly, I can work to, I think there's certain parts of my practice I can, I can dedicate to trying to, I don't wanna say be more efficient, but, you know, help discover more efficient processes on this side. But at the same time, a lot of my fees are, you know, predicated on what y'all are doing and how often you're meeting and sort of thing, but certainly that line. I can assure you that I love you guys as a client, but, you know, just like with anything else that gets you busy at work, sure, if we can trim it back a little bit, that would be, you know, happily received, yeah.
I mean, it's a $68,000 is a penny, is what I understand, is that correct? So even if we could just take down 70,000, that's a penny in tax rate. Now, I do wanna know, where is the Walker House management? I see Operation Voice Water. Yeah, I see Operation Voice Water, and I see Operation Water, and this is like really bad, because we need to line these things up, like put them together somehow.
Is it?
Page two, are you looking at 16615 Park and Walker House Maintenance was the?
That's maintenance. That's not the maintenance.
Management, all right.
I'm trying to find out where it is.
Yeah, no, I saw it too, and of course can't find it.
District management.
Just the management piece, yes.
And it's.
16734.
17734.
167.
Taylor did reply on the 15901. She said that this is the amount needed to balance the budget to zero. Assigned surplus equals reserves that would be used. That's for 15901. The reason that, the reason that it's blank, she says, that is the amount needed to balance the budget to zero. The assigned surplus equals reserves that would be used.
So both were negative at 533, or 600,000, right?
She didn't give the negative, but it's.
It should've been.
Yeah.
Yeah, the GM, the GM, or amount's 200,000, which is.
So you've kind of recommended that maybe we just kind of curtail some of the irrigation unless we have something that, we need, another drought would be really devastating for that part, but I think that right away needs some attention as well. What about the fence project? Did we just put 100,000 in there? How did we do that?
Well, that's maintenance.
We left that, that's maintenance for repairs.
That's not the project, yeah.
Yeah, that's the yellow highlighted one on page two.
All right, so I'm trying to just find where else we could trim, you know, if Sean's willing to kind of help us out, that would be good. And TRIP, the landscape maintenance is 475. And so far, we spent 344, but we also had weather events that caused some of this. Now, did that weather events get into a different bracket?
I know some of them.
It went to Park, that's fine.
Some of them went to, we created a budget item for it, and now its exact name is escaping me.
It was Park Maintenance, here it is, I bet, no?
No.
No, it had a separate line.
Storm cleanup.
Yes, that was.
There we go.
So there's a zero in there.
For next year.
Right, so we really, and truly, then why is he gone up to 470? Where did that go?
475 for TRIP, yeah. 475, we have chance field that we're gonna start maintaining. We don't know, we do have some, obviously, other issues with trees and stuff that we're gonna have to take on. We have the fire break that we haven't discussed yet. We do have some vineage that we talked about, talked doing that in the wintertime as opposed to doing it right now, while it's the most fire, you know, retarder or whatever issue. So that, that's what we're gonna be doing.
Well, we can always change those things. Like the chance field doesn't need to be grade A, it's a practice field, it's not a play field.
Well, it needs to be maintained.
It needs to be maintained now that you all have spent the money. It just now got upgraded, so you don't want it to get, you know, less than what it is now.
Well, we've done that multiple times, so it happens over time, but I'm just saying.
I think that it will happen less if you all maintain it more often. I do believe that in the past, the district has not maintained it consecutively. So if we do keep money in there, it will allow for us not to have to go back and spend tens of thousands.
Isn't, yeah, because the, yeah, okay, so I get some of that. I'm just trying to find somewhere we can just drop some money.
So I do, I can confirm that that 500,000 that we do have for the irrigation is for Tomlinson. I said we push it back to 250,000, and let's only focus on really our main meters that we have out here, and then have him start, like I said, adjusting as far as small piping areas and stuff. If we can handle all of our main areas where we have the metering itself, we'll have to spot repair any of the lines, but if we can get the metering down so that we can start maintaining it from a more controlled perspective, let's try that.
Can you explain about the metering?
So we have, out in your irrigation fields, you have control meters that obviously set up timers. So let's get the timers in check. We don't know how old those they are. Let's, let's do all the timers first, and then we'll start looking at if lines break. But our timing, our timing is the issue in a lot of places.
Well, unless it's also flow. We have very, very poor, low flow, so.
Well, when you have low flow, that means you have rocks in it. So we can always blow lines. So if, instead of us repairing, you know, it would be maybe more of a maintenance issue.
Could do that.
Yeah, so we can always open a line unless they're that old that they have to, you know, crack. But if there are areas, if we can get the timing, timers down, that will help us be able to monitor the flow a lot better. It will allow for us to start maybe managing heads and seeing how we're doing with those. And it will also indicate a big leak if we have one somewhere. But we are, we are also in a leak adjustment pattern right now, or a leak detection pattern right now with James Shealy. So if there were issues that we had that were significant in Tomlinson, he would find those. Right now, he hasn't. So I'd say, I'd say let's go back to 250, and let's just hope that it's good for another year, and let's hit those, let's hit those brackets, just timers.
That's a good number. I mean, that helps right there. Who's actually running the budget? Are you doing that, Lauren?
I'm making notes.
I've got, I've got a number right now, so if we take, if we.
Somebody actually got it.
Or Lauren, if you're gonna ask if the tax is in the budget.
If we take out the 250 and take out 70 from Sean, our difference is 281 right now. Where are our cameras?
That was, I think, one of the adjusted for things. It's the top of the last page.
16803.
And 804. Well, not 804, sorry, 803.
Oh, it's 40,000.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we already, yeah, we already dropped 35 from that number.
Yeah, we did, we cut it back.
I think we're gonna need that.
And then the ACs, I guess that's 10,000, I know.
Let's go 5.
The 5 on those? Okay, so 5 on AC.
Can you, you made that in?
Well, and I guess one.
We're almost at it.
Broader question, maybe, I think also bears are working on this, is obviously, we meet regularly, and it's a leisure for us to amend our budget. We may want, perhaps may wanna leave placeholders on some of these expenses, like AC and others, with the knowledge that it's tapping reserves to cover repairs. I mean, for long lease on the process for this, is even if it's in the budget, you're gonna still have to come to us for approval to expend, right? And so that may be a way to help us manage some of this, perhaps, is on some of these items where if we could have Taylor, I guess before the next meeting discussed, maybe perhaps, I might wanna propose it, if she could maybe work with you, Lisa, on some of the items where we're putting money in as contingent to your repairs for various items, right? Maybe, I don't wanna say isolate it, but maybe try to put together something that can show us, like here's stuff where we don't have a hard term number, that we're going to cost a certain amount, but we know it may cost us an amount, to make sure perhaps you've got that available reserves if you wanna spend that. So then when it comes around to, if we get these things together, we could bundle them up as a, here's a budget, and then it can tap into these things if we have a good year, if it's cool, right? If things work out, that gives us flexibility. Is that a thought? I mean, that's open to discussion, because I wanna make sure that we can think about it systematically, because I wanna make sure we preserve resources to make sure we can make the repairs. But I also understand, given how tight we're trying to manage the budget, that if we have money allocated and we get to the end of fiscal year, we didn't use it all, and that's money we might have been able to use, let's say, just an example, for TRIP or for Sean, where we're going to have meetings, you know, TRIP may have to cut down a new tree, right? Because that's one thing, is I wanna make sure we've got these things noted and tracked, but I don't know if we wanna put a lot toward the, just as in have it sit there and not be used for the year.
Well, and I agree with you on that. I mean, if we consider the fact that the Services Subcommittee does have a $5,000 a month that we're capable, if anything were to come up. Amenities, amenities, amenities and services, actually.
Oh, that's maintenance.
They do. So if we leave it off the budget entirely, we still have a way to cover it and not budget it as an item that could possibly not be used to where, so that, that's an option.
Right, can I go back to me too as well? I think he's the bad, I think it's good share. I'm still just hung up on landscape, it's almost 500,000 dollars. I think we have got to get a little more prudent with what our expectations are.
And I understand what you're saying, but we are not prepared when it comes to the cleaning of that creek or fire break.
But let's pull that out of there and put it in S4, because I think we have.
But it's not in S4.
The creek is in S4.
But not fire break. Fire break is not in S4.
Did we just get it itemized? Like, did, did TRIP have it itemized, like what's 475?
Well, I mean, and I, we could, we could have him do that, but I think it's gonna be a little bit tough, like I said, considering, we've never, well, and I say we've, but I think in the 15 years he's been out here, he's never done any, any cleaning like that.
Well, he's not done fire breaks.
Yes, he did, in 2018.
No, I talked with David, with David Gray.
Not supposed to.
David, I even spoke with David Gray on that, and he's, I told him I've done this in Paloma Lakes, and we also did it in Travis County by '18. This hasn't been done out here.
Well, maybe we can see from him what, like, what percentage of that is water breaks or cleanup. That would just be good to see, like, what goes into that number. Like we asked, like we're asking of David Gray.
Right, and we do have to consider the fact that, I mean, the gas on its own, the price, the cost of that by itself is outrageous. That, that one piece right there, it just changes his contract completely entirely, actually.
If that 475 equals a great number, like the breakdown is, is all stuff we need and we need this year, then great.
Yeah, I think I agree with Director Johnson. I think in the future, we oughta subcategorize some of these items, because it just tracks it better instead of lumping it all in, and then we're like, what is this for and how do we spend it? I mean, it's kind of hard to follow, you know, if we don't know what.
So in the past, Taylor actually had done that. She had trees isolated and broken out, and what we found is that it actually didn't work out properly, so we lumped it all back up into one, but we can.
She went to that a couple of minutes.
Well, I think to the point is, I think to Lisa's point, you think for, and to see what we did, I think, I think when we're actually adopting the budget, rolling it up, I think is probably beneficial with the ultimate adopt a document. But I think for our planning and work purposes, having a much more detailed document to work from, you know, I'll use example, legislature, Sean knows the state, you know, if you read the state budget, it's a thick document, everything's rolled up in like a company, major agencies have like two or three strategies that cover, you know, billions of dollars, but when legislature works on a work group like we're doing now, they have very detailed documents that go through, breaking it from strategy to program, you know, including the staff, like, the point is, but they're able to make those granular decisions and get rolled up into one document. So it may be something you need to ask Taylor to do, probably adopt, if Taylor could help. I know she's not here, we're piling a bunch of work on her.
That's the best I can do.
For next year, are we gonna have the asset management program populated? And I'm thinking, like, we could just go through that and break it out as we need to.
Next year's budget shift will be even smoother. That's the plan.
Yeah, and it should be clear to Director Schumaker's point, I'm not asking 602 to be broken out into lots of line items. I just wanna know on a separate sheet what the different things that added together equal 475.
Maybe even break it down between Parks, Tomlinson's this, and Tomlinson's that, and Mahoney's this.
How, more, how would TRIP give us the more likely?
I think I'd be okay with Parks being Parks, but I think things like chance field, you know, what does the maintenance cost? Because that way, the board can look at, you know, man, is it really necessary for us to spend that kind of money?
Okay, so it is 7 o'clock, and I think we're gonna, having a good conversation, but we're kind of getting in the weeds here a little bit. So I've taken the.
Recommendations.
The recommendations, which is started at 601, minus 70,000, minus 250, and then minus 5. So we're at 276 right now.
Oh, great.
Are we discussing this again before adopting?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, so I guess really the question, correct me, Sean and Lauren, is if we think we can get to where we need to on the budget, again, we don't, I know we wanted to do the parity, but we're probably going to state a higher number and then come down. So, I mean, do we really need to continue to keep going through the budget right now?
Well, that's up to y'all, but you will have another opportunity to review your budget before you even finalize it, so you'll have an entire meeting dedicated to that.
Speedy.
Yeah, so your budget meeting tonight, I think really is just kind of informative on what you're going to state as your published rate tonight. And anecdotally, I will say, I have this board, in my experience, I think is historically published high and typically comes back and levies lower. I have other boards that just straight out of the gate say, no, we wanna keep a parity rate, or, you know, if they're experiencing growth, they know they're going down or what have you. And then I, you know, I have one board last week explicitly, they always publish at 3.5% and then come back and levy lower, so it's kind of, it's whatever y'all policy, there's not a one-size-fits-all approach here, you, you know, different boards do different things. it's kind of, it's whatever y'all policy, there's not a one size fits all approach here. You, you, you know, different boards do different things. I agree.
Lauren, what do you see? Three point five? Okay, that would be a safe.
Can I ask a couple of questions this morning?
Absolutely.
Um, and I, and I guess here, here's my big picture where I'm thinking is, you know, we've been talking about running the survey to get our input on the bond and improvements. Obviously we can't use it for pools. We're gonna come out of the operating budget, but, um, I guess here's my big picture, long-term thinking, given my discussion with Sean and Lauren about, about how the three and a half percent works. Um, do we, do you have a ballpark idea of what the tax rate to issue the bonds would be? Like is like three?
It's in your packet.
It's in your packet.
Did I miss that? I was looking through.
It's one of these that.
It's the second cash flow analysis that has the three point one five bonds listed on top. Should be paid. Yes, you do.
It's the set service. I think you actually have it.
Never.
Hold on, I have it.
Eight three.
I was taking notes on everything.
Yes, I believe it should be.
It's on that page, I think. Is it this one?
It's this one.
Yes, it has the three point one five at the top. It has a yellow underneath the green.
Yeah.
Uh, that is taking current debt service out ten years, which is typically what we do with bonds to twenty thirty-three. Uh, you all need to, I mean, we could always play with that a little bit, but what you need to understand is your existing debt is going to be paid off in twenty twenty-seven. I don't really think y'all want to have a gap between when debt service is totally gone and you reissue debt service. So that, that is something to keep in mind. The other thing would be, um, I know that y'all were talking about maybe having a more detailed list of exactly what would be covered in some of these line items. It is possible that some of these could be used for part lines. So it's just pool items are completely off the table, fence items are completely off the table. So looking at those, those do give you options. Um, to Sean's point, yes, y'all have typically published at the recommended three and a half percent rate. Usually it's your tax rate, meaning you're, you know, a rather, um, detailed discussion about where you want to see the tax rate go. What I would say is kind of what I've seen over the last few years is the need for operation and maintenance for the district has grown. Your overall tax rate, including that O and M, has decreased. So you are going to get to a point, and I think you're at the precipice now where that surplus that you all had is not going to be able to stretch to continue to balance a budget. So that is just something to keep in mind. That's, you know, financial advisor saying, you know, if I'm looking a little bit farther than this year.
Yeah.
You know, y'all's needs for improvements or rehab, redo, all of this has tended to start kind of fracturing up. So that is something that you do have to look at when having these discussions is just that the debt service is what the debt service is. It, it will continue to go down, but you do have these part bonds and you're kind of in a timetable now within the next five years, those need to be issued. So you don't have that gap. Um, you know, I, I don't foresee the fire tax going down anytime soon. Uh, that, that does mean that it's going to be more pressure on what can O and M cover.
But and, and that's, Lauren, that's, I, I totally want to talk about the, the route projections. Basically, I think that, you know, both for me, you think practical matter, I don't think anybody here wants to go over three and a half, but also there's electric expense incurred. And so I'm thinking, you know, at this time, we haven't got, you know, and we've talked with the survey provider, like getting the survey out, getting resident input, wanting to build the bonds. We don't have that. I guess looking forward to next year, we're doing this exercise and wanting to preserve like some ability to like get those bonds done, right? Without happening to them either like, I, I guess I feel like maybe I'd rather be a bit more conservative budgeting this year to kind of create maybe some capacity next year. Also to see perhaps to get an increase in values again perhaps, so stop declining. But, but I guess, and that's, I'd ask, you know, we were up last meeting, I asked Lisa, and this, you know, I'm doing, giving her back from Williamson CAD. But I asked Williamson CAD for some data on some information about what we're doing with homestead values and non-homestead values. Because one piece of the tax reform law that does affect us is there's now a twenty percent appraisal cap on non-homestead residences, right? And our other properties are below five million. And one thing I asked the CAD to talk about the value history of those.
She did hear from him.
Did they eventually get back to that data?
Yeah, he had, he's just providing me a date of when he'll be here, but he will provide the data. So we'll have all that together.
So, but, but so Lauren, that was kind of, I guess, moving towards like, I, I think you're right, we need to be careful about how we're spending things, but I guess I'm looking towards next year of like, I mean, we'll have the survey done. I think we might have a little better handle where, you know, values are going long-term, right? I get, I appreciate the projection being at flat value. It's kind of a worst case, right? But.
And I mean, if you look at this year, y'all, y'all really only overall increased value minimally.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And I'm in the field.
Yeah.
It's not going up.
And what we're seeing is this is kind of going back to more pre-COVID levels where you're not seeing really large increases. Um, I am currently anticipating that next year it'll be minimal, any growth. Um, a lot of that plays into the fact that y'all aren't a developed district. There's not, a lot of, you know, a lot of what helps with that growth is new homes.
Or develop the commercial plant.
Or, yeah. And so, yes, there will be some growth. I'm not saying there won't be. I, I just don't think you're going to see like what we saw from say twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two where you have this.
That was a very, very, very rare.
Yes, very rare. But if you kind of go back pre-two thousand twenty, you'll see, yes, there was growth, but it was a lot more conservative. So I, I think realistically, that's probably what we have coming forth. You know, which is really driving our recommendation to look at, you know, you all had some costs that obviously you didn't anticipate. You've also had some costs that you've been looking at for a little while, you know. And not to be jinxey, but developed districts, things do come up that we're gonna have to be taking care of. And I know y'all do have the water tank rehabilitation things that we've already said, the pride they held off another year. That's a, that's a big project. And that will not be done with any kind of bond money because that's utility. So those are just things to kind of look at when you're having these discussions because like from last year to this year, y'all are already taking a five cent decrease in your O and M.
Yeah, I think, Lauren, just to add to that too, I think, um, Lisa's done an excellent job of getting a lot of things up to par. And I think we've covered a lot of major expenses under this budget. And so what is the surplus with this budget from now until October one? I mean, we could probably push some projects in this year's too, could we not? Or can we transfer that, that over to the new budget?
So this will kind of play into the same conversation y'all had last year.
Okay.
Which is kind of twofold. One, you don't want to go into the market and try to sell bonds with a deficit budget. You're just not going to get a great rate. You're not going to get a great rating. Insurance is going to look at, you know, are we gonna have to cover things in the future for this district? Uh, the other thing is, is that when you go into the market trying to sell bonds, you really do want to show them that you have a year's worth of operating cost covered. Last year we knocked it down to nine months. Y'all worked really hard and through values and everything this year, you were able to kind of get it right back up near that twelve months. So it's, it's going to be, you know, right now I'm projecting bonds probably wouldn't sell until twenty twenty-four. Realistically, I mean, if we even started, say, at your regular meeting.
Yeah.
That's giving David three months to get everything together, get it ready to go to the TCEQ. We assume it's an expedited process, that there are no hiccups of TCEQ. It comes back in sixty days. We have a thirty day waiting period and then we'll consult. So you're looking at spring.
That's what I was thinking is the timing on, we actually did that, yeah.
Exactly. And so, yeah, could you push that to later next year? Could you push it to twenty, twenty-five? All of those are possibilities. On the other end of that, you've also got the, at two thousand twenty-seven, all existing debt is paid off. And do you really want to be adding new debt at the same time you just pay off?
Probably not two years there.
Right, but you do have two years. So I'm just saying that, you know, depending on how much wait time goes into this, there's just that timing issue. And it's just, it's things that we have to look at for y'all of making sure that when we do go to market, we're presenting everything in the best possible light to get y'all the best possible interest rate. The best possible rating.
Can I ask you a question based on something you said?
Sure.
So, um, you've mentioned twelve months of reserve, which is just the, the calculation here at eleven point six five months of reserve is simply the total expenditures for the proposed budget year divided by twelve, right? So the more we cut out of that budget, the more reserve months we'll have, right? Like we already freed up.
Yes and no.
Almost a month. No, uh, three quarters of a month.
Yes and no, because it depends on are y'all gonna want to use some of your surplus funds to do what you did last year, which is to balance the budget. So.
Right.
It is a yes and a no. Yes, you've gotten to this point, but we're not, these are projections.
Right.
Still. So once, say, we have the audit and we know exactly, but yes, you're, you're getting close, but at the same time, it depends on how much you want to essentially your mark to further lessen that.
You're saying using reserves misses the calculation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And what we do last year, we drew how many?
So y'all decided to reserve nine months of operating budget and you put three months towards balancing the budget after y'all had trimmed other areas.
So if we took, just saying, I know you're gonna just hate me, but we took the two seventy-six against the five twelve, that would give us how many months? About nine months?
She has y'all currently at.
It's not like I wanted to lose that.
Well, I think, I think it's a very good, I guess the, the big thing I'm kind of going to start questions, Lauren, is that, well, I'll let you get to see this question first and then I'll.
Um, if I'm doing like the rough back of the napkin.
Yeah.
Yeah, about that. Eight nine.
So how do we look if we have a nine month reserve? I know we're, I don't want to continue this pattern, but I think with, it just, there's nowhere else in the world that we can trim.
We are in a very different market than we were when we had this conversation last year. Last year we had high values. We have lower interest rates. There was more play with your ratings agencies, your insurance agencies this year. Just with market conditions, even though new bonds are faring overall better, we're not getting the lower rates. I mean, there was, y'all are rated currently A one. Just to let you know, today there was an A three that sold at four point two eight eight nine. So where we could have probably, you know, when we first started this conversation, we were talking like two point seven five as the high end. And now I'm having to play with four point two five four five for the safe. And that would probably still give you some capital projects funds left over that you could apply. But we are in a very different market. So, I mean, I've had districts that would have qualified last year for a higher investment grade rating who are not qualifying this year for that.
Oh.
And Lauren, I guess that, your point, I think you exactly, one of the places I was kind of trying to go, one of the question, that, 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 you know, you mentioned like, you know, in, in, the real estate market is going to be kind of trending down, right? Like you look at the, look at the packet for a lot of the Friday meeting, the things that mentioned, you know, noted in there in the pack from Williamson CAD was, you know, the market value to the neighborhood was like over nine hundred million. Now it's like, you know, below a hundred million. Um, you know, there's still, one of them was talking to you, he's still showing like seventy million deferred appreciation.
Right.
And, you know, but there was, I think, more last year. And I guess one of the, I guess what I'm kind of going towards is like, I guess if we're going to have to do thing, because obviously the neighborhood voted approved the bonds. I think there's demand to get those projects done at some point, right? They decide they don't want them anymore. I don't think, or anybody said, you know. But I, I guess, I, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking that another year of data on the real estate market to see where it kind of settles out, right? Because I think it's still like, I think it's still kind of ticking down. There's uncertainty about it, I think, that.
Also keep it, also keeping my next year's major election.
Yeah.
Which is causing a lot of.
Which does cause a little bit of anxiety in the market on occasion.
But I guess the point is like, I think if we, if we tried to be able to get everything together to have that be the year we make the move to like, you know, issue the debt to move forward, we'll have our information from the neighborhood. But then if we need to make adjustments to reserves, if we, if we, if we're arguing to get, if we need to make adjustments to M and O at that point to boost reserves slightly to make that offering better, right? I guess I'd use having one kind of move for residents, right? Where we say, this is kind of what we have to do to make this work for the neighborhood. Or you sound like that they prefer to have a year's worth of reserves, right?
Yes, typically, because that just shows that, say, if something catastrophic were to happen, the district could still maintain for at least a year while it was reassessing what it needed to do. Um.
So I guess, I guess we're, we're showing even at the, at the current, I guess, to Director Johnson, we saw like we're trying to, to hopefully manage, as we get to next year, we have about a year's worth of reserves, right? But if we come in, we're like, you know, eleven months, we're bumping up the M and O a little bit to kind of make that work out, to issue the bonds might be beneficial, right?
Explain to me what you mean by bumping up the M and O.
That, 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 let's say next year, we're looking, at least we're talking doing parity, right? But let's say next year, we're okay, we've got our input for residents, we're gonna move forward, issue the bonds.
Okay.
And we're slightly, yeah.
I just want to put one slide bookmark there. Remember, if you do the parity rate, you're knocking your M and O down far.
Yes.
Which means you're gonna have to use more reserve.
Well, one of the things we're trying to do in our budget discussion, right, is to mitigate our use of reserve, right? And so we have some uncertainty. We, we don't need that reserve. We don't. If we have a good year, we don't need much of that reserve. We may have pretty much close to a year to hand when we come back next year. And then, but if we, let's say we're slightly below and it's like, well, that would make a material difference in our bond rating then, then we could say, okay, we'll increase it, you know, or I guess, it's just all assuming values are flat, right? To keep this discussion simple, right? Assuming that this year's AV is the same as next year's AV.
Yes, but we're not having a parallel conversation. So your budget this year is based on the higher M and O. If you go to parity, that significantly changes.
That's the point is we're trying to reduce our budget to make the parity rate work. And that's the thing we're talking about.
Right. But by doing that, your revenues are gonna decrease too. So remember.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Well, I totally understand. But like, I guess, but do you see I'm kind of going for like that if we're making one move next year to get it all split, tied up? Does that make sense? That's what I'm kind of looking, because I, I have a bit of heartburn, you know, if we were issuing this year about if values go down further, right? Like, like, the, your point, like market, we're not, market's not a stable place for real estate.
I, I think I'm following you. Um, it's not necessarily one to one, because when you have, say, you all decide to go with the parity rate, right? That's going to significantly decrease your M and O rate. Okay? Which means now you're significantly decreasing your revenues. But your budget items as far as expenses right now, you've. But your budget items, as far as expenses right now, you carved about three, two, two fifty-three?
Today.
Round numbers.
Two fifty-one.
Right, so. We, without, just, I mean, I don't know that it's going to necessarily come out in the same way I think you're thinking.
But at least I want to talk through it with you.
Yeah, because it's just that your, your revenues are gonna go down. But your expenses can only go down so much, because there are just some things that good, bad, or otherwise, are just what they are as far as expenses. And a lot of that would be, um, like consultant fees, um, some of your maintenance, just because some of it just can't be cut any more than it's probably cut. And I, I can't speak for Lisa or Taylor doing the budget. My, my discussion's more academic in that way, but it, it's just to keep that in mind, that, yes, you're making cuts. But there's also that other end of the revenues that are going to cover some of those expenses, so it, it is a balancing act. So.
Those is all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I just, I'm gonna take the day and cut it. So, we have irrigation here, and there's another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's sitting there. Or more than that, we could almost take that money that's left in that budget and just swap out tummunts and irrigation for right now. It seems to be surviving, I mean, it is what it is. Uh, and then when we have some extra money, then we can go in and.
Pull bond money, please, for that too.
Yeah.
That's part of the park renovation, right? Because obviously, for, if you do, our park master plan, in, in East City, if we contemplate, I think a lot of work to tummunts and, right? Which we probably, I would assume, we're moving and changing irrigation, right?
It was going to be part of the, when we're doing the fence bond, irrigation was included in that.
Right.
So, I don't know why irrigation in the parks could be part of the park renovation.
And I'm not a bond counsel, nor am I general counsel. But I, I can obviously go back to them, and once we have a better idea what exact projects we're talking about. Be, because that is part of the problem, is, you know, we have kind of this umbrella line item. And that, that's why bond counsel has asked me to go back and get a specific breakdown of what exactly pool improvements consisted of. So.
So, so basically, five hundred and seventy thousand, that's seven, six oh one, pretty much takes care of it and brings it to.
It would get very close.
It'll get very close, twenty-six thousand, which I'm sure we can find. And, 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 you know, that is, I think, to, I mean, to the point where, you know, I think that's important here, is I think if, 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 if the bond, if the bond counsel, when they're talking about things that could categor, they know could categorically be in and out, right? Like, the pools are obviously categorically out.
Right.
If, if they could, before we adopt, would you kind of give us some kind of, at least broad category on the park bond? So, to the extent they can, obviously, because I know some of them may be a similar project, but that would be helpful, I think, to us. And I get this is a tough question, because, you know.
It, it's, and Sean, please correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding is, bond counsel wrote it broad enough to where many projects could be included. However, when you get down to the nitty-gritty of exactly what certain projects are, that's where we're running into hiccups. Is because some of that, yes, definitely, some of that, I think, falls into gray area of bond counsel would have to do a deeper dive to figure out exactly if that could be covered.
Yeah, I'm not positive on irrigation systems, if they're covered by a park bond or not. Um, David Gray can probably answer that question. Um, but, you know, I think that is, you, you know, you've got your definite nose on golf courses and, um, swimming pools. I will tell you, I think splash pads are okay, so it's not a swimming pool, so it's kind of close.
Someone's gotta draw the line somewhere.
I guess, Lauren, it's right, I don't think there's, there's certain fencing you can't do, but you can bond reimburse a fence around the water tank. Uh, so there are, it, it's fairly nuanced, just to offer a few examples.
Well, I kind of figured that was gonna be the ultimate answer, but.
I think David could probably answer that if it makes me.
Okay, so I, I, I agree with Director Roberts, let's, is everyone okay striking out?
Yes.
Okay.
Irrigation.
I don't know. I, I concur with Director Roberts, Director Johnson, Director. Everybody about, about taking.
Now, common sense wise, I think, of course, I'm here, I'm on record saying that's gonna be part of being included in the bonds. But again, I'm, I'm not an expert there either, but I do know it was included, if during the fence, the rideaway part, the irrigation was.
No.
And it's not a pool or a golf course, so.
And I agree with you, I just don't know if that falls into that weird utility facility.
Okay, you're gonna, you're gonna confirm.
But I will confirm.
Okay, but let's go ahead and do it.
Yes.
Two hundred and fifty out.
Yeah.
So, that whole line ends out there.
Okay.
And we're gonna have another chance to discuss the two, twenty-six, yeah, four twenty this last.
So, we took six oh one minus the five seventy, and I took the seventy thousand, and it, that's, Sean, you can add some back in. It's like we're in a positive thirty-eight thousand. I took six oh one.
I'm at.
Minus this.
Minus seventy, minus five hundred, minus five.
Said a positive thirty-eight thousand. I did not need the five thousand, I don't know where we got that.
Five thousand came off of the HVAC, we went from ten to five.
You can go zero on the HVAC.
Okay.
You can go zero on the HVAC, you don't need ten thousand there.
Well, we're already in a positive, so.
But you still don't need it, we've got that services on.
But we have to, always a man. Okay, does that take care of this?
Okay, so, next steps. And Travis.
Yeah, I can walk us through here, what we have on the agenda.
You have, why are you smiling over there?
Because, uh, uh, when it's like, if you're Scooby Doo, then tell her to not talk about tax rate.
Scooby Doo. That's my fifteen-year-old's favorite thing. Fifteen-year-old.
So, board members, if you'll flip with me to your calendar, this is, let's see.
Hi, how was Jenny's phone part over here?
Yeah, same here, I took it all apart, look at that, I'll find it in a minute, Sean.
Are they gonna have a date?
I'll just look at your shoulders.
It's the one that looks like this, so, this is, so these are our dates, so we really, before we can get to the, the actual publication we actually need, they could need to determine what they were going to need to have in question to the, like, the tax. Um, I know we had a query availability on the sixth of the thirteenth. I think everyone at this table was available for the sixth. I think on the thirteenth, every, well, I'm sorry, the, the Taylor was not available for the sixth. And I believe everybody was available on the thirteenth at this moment.
I got that one.
You're not available on thirteen?
So, if Taylor can't be here, I don't, I don't really like meeting without her, can we get somebody from Matt to come?
So, to be sure here, um, you will have another budget meeting in between now and then. On August thirtieth, you're currently scheduled to have your final budget meeting, and then you would be coming back a week later to, that'd be the actual tax.
But I think somebody from that should be here.
But, yeah, I think that's a question for Taylor, and I.
Well, I just asked them to have somebody here.
Do we need to make a, adopt a date, Sean, is that your answer?
We did, so that's part of the publication, yeah, so I think what I'm hearing is that we're looking for the sixth.
Yes.
A motion to, uh.
We can roll it in altogether.
Okay, he got it, then just take that motion.
Yeah, well, I, we got the sixth, and so.
And what was the thirteenth?
It was four.
Yeah.
The sixth or the thirteenth.
Okay.
But I, I would like to have all of the directors here.
What do we need to, I mean, uh, do, what do we need, a representative from Matt here?
So, anything with our budget.
Well, the sixth.
The, the sixth is the one she can make.
All right, so, and that just gets us down to the other, um, we'll be looking to establish your, what the, the record vote or the published vote is gonna be. I think I hear your financial advisor recommending that you go with the.
Sixty-one ten. We're also gonna need you all to confirm, uh, the recommendation that we're a developed district.
So, we did it on the back of this one?
I think we did that at our last, right?
Did we do that last one? Okay.
I, I think.
I can't remember.
I do remember this discussion.
I've only had about five thousand things in the last two weeks.
So, we're basically.
So, this would be the one that is the sixty-one ten. It is just under a sixty-dollar average increase, which brings y'all in at three point four four percent.
That's just the rate that we're gonna publish.
Publish.
Correct.
We can still come down.
We all will have a formal hearing on the sixth here.
And I, I recommend, I think, that for Director Roberts, I listen, probably others, if we publish this amount, let's make sure we do some good communication so people know that that's not the actual amount, that we haven't voted on that amount, and then it could go down.
Yeah, send me a blurb.
I think we posted something to the website, maybe last year, that talked about tax rate process.
And I think we also issued a special newsletter last year.
And I did submit to Amy the blurb about tax rate, and we'll go through some of that before your newsletter.
And now, that, that'll get sent out on the eighteenth of this month.
Perfect.
So, we are actually ahead of the.
This week it will be here.
Cool, okay, so do you have that motion?
Yeah, so let me, I will repeat that, yeah, just to make sure we're good to go. Um, so, we would be looking to establish and take the record vote on the proposed tax rate, which is per, soon to the recommendation your financial advisor, point six one one zero per one hundred valuation. To schedule a public hearing, and which adopts in the two thousand and twenty-three tax rate, we consider that September sixth at six thirty P M here at the Walker House. And to authorize publication of the water district notice of public hearing on the tax rate.
So, we have a motion by Director Roberts, or the second?
I'll second.
Director Young second, and any more discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'll just put my position out there for the record, I guess. Um, I definitely understand the logic of putting out a higher rate, so it gives us some flexibility. But as we're, I'm, as I'm not gonna vote on a rate higher than zero, an increase higher than zero, I'm not gonna vote for the posted rate to be higher than zero.
And I'll concur with Director Johnson, and it's not a knock on our process or anything internal, but, and this would be a lot easier, I think, if this was being live. This is not a knock on our process, but just simply like, you know, for folks that, you know, do read it, right? And if they miss the newsletter, or they miss the post, right? They're gonna be thinking, oh, like, my tax is gone, I need to come down here and like, get a comment in. And if, if we're really seriously kind of playing about parity, basically, I would, I think we could just post it parity if we're not seriously planning to go over. You know, and this took place, like, as we get more streaming and other options, if people like, see this stuff live and watch what we discussed, right? Where they're actually seeing it in real time, I think it's ideal to tell residents, hey, you know, we're doing some stuff procedurally to give us some flexibility, but since we're still not quite there yet, and it sounds like we're all kind of roughly in the, wanna be a parity camp, I don't if it hurts to post it this year, like that, you know?
Um, and just for the record, our, our current is point six five nine five, so, some people may just see it as, oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah, good, you're correct, you're correct, yeah, yeah.
Well, historically, it's always been done like this, so it's not like a surprise.
Yeah.
But it does cause confusion.
Yeah, and every type of jurisdiction's doing it, there's some of things, so.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying the process itself is like that, but we're just like, you know, like, say, we've done a lot, I think, already to really improve the transparency of our processes, right? Getting these things posted and.
Lauren has.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I just had two points that I wanted y'all to think about. One, uh, your budget is reflects, reflecting the sixty-one ten. So, if you were to decide to post the lower rate, y'all haven't seen the revenue effect of that necessarily yet. Also, there must be a forum of at least three directors for any rate to be published.
Okay, so I keep the motion at the stand. Okay, and Director Young second, uh, any more discussion?
I have a question, but it's not relevant to this, I heard it was relevant, but I don't.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye. Can you say me?
Oh, oh, yeah.
We'll, we'll say aye. Well, you, she's like, or I'll just pose, so we're like, so, we'll, we'll, we know.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
No, aye, but, but, but I think, just to say, everybody's already watching, like, I think we've done a lot of good work here tonight, you know? And like I said, I think as we get, we've done a lot on transparency, as we get even more on this, like, I mean, improve resident input and keep up.
And hopefully, the actual hearing will be live.
Yeah, sadly awesome too.
Yeah, yeah, and she's, Lisa's really working hard on that, okay, next step.
Yeah, so now we will just have your regular meeting next week. I don't know that we'll talk too much about budget or taxes at that meeting. In the following week, you'll meet on the thirtieth of August, um, to come back and have your final formal conversation about your budget. And then you'll come back the following week to meet on September sixth to actually learn your tax rate.
Once a week, the rest.
Okay, um, good to hear, we already discussed that. Um, agenda items, if you have anything you want on the agenda for next week, you have to get it in this evening. Please, uh, do need that for that. And then, if you're anything, the packet needs to be in there tomorrow morning, and I'm looking at you.
Understood.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.